Is it the agenda that's being discussed?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, we are on page 10. Page 15, which is 2012-OR141, in the driver's sheet. Discussion of that they're going to have a presentation on the discussion.
Page 15 is resolution number 2012-OR141 to express support for an economic development strategy and package with themes of health, fitness, medicine, and sports, involving properties behind the Science Museum of Virginia, adjacent to the Richmond Community Hospital, and at the former West Hampton School property, and participants including the city and Washington Redskins and Bon Secours Regional Health System.
Before you start, it sounds like we're having this presentation, and there are lots of stories about this paper and plans for the Redskins and their coming to Richmond. We thought it might help all if this presentation was given so that citizens here and at home could see what the proposal is. What is proposed?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of council, I'm Susan Denzil, Chief of Staff to the Mayor. And what we'd like to do fairly succinctly tonight is to talk about the proposed Washington Redskins and Bon Secours Economic Development Package, so that you all, the audience, have a sense of what we're proposing. First thing I'll talk about is, we've been talking about the Washington Redskins coming to Richmond for the last year, and they are planning to be here for their three-week summer training camp starting in 2013. And that's a very challenging and optimistic timeframe, but we're committed to making it happen for 2013. It is a three-week training camp, but the number of people who will travel to see the Washington Redskins training is supposed to be amazing. We are hoping to have something like 10,000 people coming on a daily basis with a big fan appreciation day at the end of the three weeks. As you can see from this PowerPoint slide, in Maryland, DC, and Virginia, there are 2.6 million vans. And the Redskins being located in Richmond as training camp developed to Richmond base, as well as Hampton Roads, the rest of Virginia, and parts of North Carolina. In terms of our partner in this project, Bon Secours currently has 1,960 employees who live in the city of Richmond, and those annual wages amount to about $108 million a year. To talk a little bit about what Bon Secours already does in the city of Richmond, Charlotte Perkins is going to come to the podium to talk about their efforts so far. Charlotte is with their business development area.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Bon Secours enjoys its partnership with the community and with the city of Richmond. Some of the things that we have done in the city are around our preventive health programs. It is one of our community outreach programs, and we believe in giving back to our communities. And that not only means taking care of the community's health, but also assuring that the city has the things it needs, such as the programs in the schools, also as well as the means to grow gardens in the city, and the means to bring also the grocery stores and other businesses to the city. Our caravan is well-known for outreach, where we go out to communities that cannot in the city, that when people cannot get out, we have a caravan that goes out and provides medical services as well. One of the things that we're also most proud of, and we know that our city in particular, Richmond, has an issue with childhood obesity. And recently, New Morant is one of the most obese cities in the United States, and we do believe that our children are at risk, and the future of our city is at risk. So, childhood obesity with the Move and Main and program, we're relying on 26 organizations throughout the community to actually promote wellness, to promote exercise, and to promote education on healthy eating. We recently donated $120,000 to the city schools to put Move and Main in the schools, which helps not only with giving exercise, but also education around math programs. Diabetes is a huge second issue, and one of the reasons I think diabetes is becoming even more of an issue for our children in particular is because of the obesity factor. In the East End, we know there's a huge need for diabetes education. There's a need for wellness. There's a need for fitness centers and safe places for our children. And I think you'll hear today from Sister Anne Marie Mack, how this proposal will help with that. In addition, free health screenings are critical and important. By time with the Redskins, they promote men's health, and they promote health screenings for men. And one of the things I've said to the men and some of the beauties we've been in is that you're not always the greatest at getting your health taken care of. Usually, there's some woman that kind of makes you go and get your health done. But if we tie you to an NFL sports team, we do believe that health screens will become something that you'll do more. We know that Washington Redskins did this in Washington DC, and they had over 2,500 men show up for prostate screenings. So, it's something we're excited to bring to the community that we think is lacking. In addition, the SEED program, for you that don't know, the SEED program is initiated in the East End, where we're helping to try to bring grocery stores and entrepreneurs into the city. There was a grant, we gave a grant last year to start some businesses in the East End, and you'll hear hopefully Wednesday of this week where we make an announcement for additional grants to bring businesses into that community. In addition to that, one of the things that the Redskins is prominent in is helping with concussions in sports. We're very fortunate to have sports trainers that work in many of our schools in the city of Richmond and work with your athletic schools. One of the things that we do is we do a baseline concussion screen and physicals, and all of the money that we receive, we give back to the school, so that in fact, the schools can use that for sports equipment and other things. So, we really feel that the Redskins project and with the city ties immensely to our mission, and it also allows us to provide even more outreach services to our community. Thank you.
So, there are three sites involved in the economic development package. The first site is the West Hampton School site. This site is at the corner of Libby and Patterson, and it is just south of St. Mary's Hospital. I believe most of you know that St. Mary's Hospital is in Hemerankow County. It's about one foot over the line. But this facility and the expansion would be an expansion of health services in the city of Richmond. It's a four-acre site that will be leased to Bon Secours on a long-term basis for $5,000 per year. Bon Secours would also agree to maintain the playing fields that are on the west edge of the site, the left-hand side of the site. They'd agree to maintain those fields for about $35,000 a year. That's the cost the city is now incurring. In addition, on the site, in the very back northeast corner of the site is a top lot, and the top lot's been there a long time. Bon Secours is committed to improving, to upgrading the equipment, and to relocate the top lot to a location probably about two blocks away. In addition, I'd point out that Bon Secours is working to retain the school's structure, if not the entire structure of the facade, because they know that's an issue of importance to the community. The school was built in 1916, and it's a beautiful face, and Bon Secours has said if there's a way they can retain it and as much of the building as possible, they'll do that. In terms of the development at this site, they are looking at, and I realize everyone here in the room, they're looking at about 75,000 square feet of capital investment of about $24 million, and there will be 120 new jobs with an $11 million payroll at this site. The second site we've talked about is the Bon Secours Hospital that is currently in the city limits. This is in the East End, along, just off of Nine Mile Road. That's Richmond Community Hospital. The proposal there is to add 25,000 square feet of space to develop a fitness and wellness center, blood pressure center, possibly dialysis, and other physician offices. The investment, capital investment, will be about $8.5 million, 75 new jobs, and a payroll of $6.7 million a year. This is an area of the city that is historically and currently underserved. I know that Ms. Newville and Ms. Robertson can talk about this more eloquently than I can, but it's a very big concern on the city's part to provide good health services to all parts of our city, and this is a seriously underserved part. The third site in the package is the B Street site, and it's the parcel of property behind the Science Museum of Virginia. The Commonwealth of Virginia owns the site and will lease it to our Economic Development Authority for about $30,000 a year. This is a 17-acre site, and we think it's a comparable lease payment to the amount of the West Hampton site. On the site will be two side-by-side practice fields, a drill field, a field house that would include locker rooms, train rooms, weight rooms, and office space. The office space in Park will be leased by Bon Secours. They will commit to a tenure period with about $6.3 million in commitments over the tenure period. Those, that $6.3 million will be both in rent payment as well as in sponsorships. If you were looking at the portion of that amount of money that will be done as a sponsorship amount, meaning beyond the market lease rate, it's about $3 million that Bon Secours is committing to this site so that it can be developed. This area, many of you are familiar with the area. It's in just off North Boulevard corner. It's, as the crow flies, less than half a mile from the island. It's very close to Broad Street, so we think it's a great area for both Broad Street and North Boulevard in terms of retail and commercial development. We had Chris Chomora, economics, doing impact analysis of just the three-week training camp. That alone, they believe, would generate 100,000 leisure visitors a year. Forty percent of whom would stay overnight. Average stay of about two nights, generating something like $130 per visit. In addition to that, people who come just for the day would generate about $44 per visit. All total, the annual visitor spending from the three-week period would be $6.4 million, and this is for the city of Richmond proper. Also, the Redskins would spend about $2.1 million annually for their team, their staff, watching, meals, et cetera. The projected annual impact from that is about $8.5 million a year, and a potential for 81 new jobs. Also mentioned with the Washington Redskins, they have a chair of the foundation that's done great work in this community, even before they started looking at Richmond as a place for their training camps. Specifically, they've developed fields at Hotchkiss and at Blackwell Schools, and those have been very important things for those communities. They have reading programs, they have health and wellness, and they do a lot with coaches in the community. These are some of the economic development criteria we used for the location of the site. The mayor had selected and impaneled a steering committee to assess the several sites. I think there were about a dozen sites we looked at, and the Science Museum site was the top choice. We think it will have good impact for that area of town, for property values, for tourism, and good economic development they all around. In summary, the three sites would include an additional 115,000 square feet of development, $42 million in investment, capital investment, over 200 new jobs, and $19 million in payroll. Again, the economic impact would be about $8.5 million per year. And with that, Madam President, I'd like to ask Rich Johnson to talk about the role of the Economic Development Authority. Rich, in addition to being the Chair of the Economic Development Authority, Rich is the Chairman, CEO, and President of the Wilton Companies, which is commercial real estate.
My President, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. As I said, I'm Chairman of the Economic Development Authority. I'm here tonight on the Adver Board to let you all know that our board is backed on this, and Executive Committee has had good recommendations to the board, and our board has endorsed this project unanimously, and we bring that endorsement to you for your information. Our group has, in the analysis, has looked at this in a way that we would suggest would be the best way to look at it, respectfully said. This is a global strategy. We have three different sites, three different pieces of it, and the proper way to analyze it is not to perhaps try to pick one part of it and say, "Well, I like this about this site, and I don't like this about this one," but rather, it's a global strategy, but all needs to be considered as part of the package arrangement, which indeed, it truly is. The benefits in our eyes, in the city, are that it's a very solid business deal, and in addition to a very solid business deal, we also have the benefit of all the publicity of the benefits that are going to come from the addition of the Redskins. The Bon Secours piece of it is critical. Their involvement, their sponsorship is what makes the business feel solid. As we've looked at this, this investment that will be made by the city and by the Economic Development Authority, we know that we have a large obligation here to address, based on the commitment that's being made. And we look upon this as a very, very safe investment. There have been comments from kind of the town that not everything every public body does. Turns out, like the projections of the economists say, it works out to. But in this case, the numbers are on the table. The Bon Secours investment for the space they're taking together with the second core space that will be developed as part of the project, that will be leased out by the Economic Development Authority, with the authority standing responsible for the cost of the operation of that. Take this project to the point where it is virtually a guaranteed success. There will be roughly 78% of this project, this project's cost covered through the authority and through Bon Secours. That will leave, and that's within the first 10 years, that will leave us still decades yet to pass by, to only cover the last 30%, actually, that 20, less than 25%, that is not guaranteed by the two pieces of deal that are already on the table. So, we would suggest to you that it is a very, very safe deal economically, the exposure to the city in the event of a downturn, or the additional sponsorships, which we are quite comfortable before coming, are not guaranteed at this point in time. But if they aren't, the exposure to the city is very modest, and again, we have multiple decades left after the Bon Secours transaction, lease transaction expires after the Redskins. Very, very safe deal. Comes to you with a recommendation of, again, Eric from Atlas Revelation, our board records, and Lou Strong, who recommend you take it on consideration. Any other questions? We'll do that answer.
Madam President, the last speaker we have is Sister Anne Marie Mack from Bon Secours. She is the Senior Vice President for Sponsorship, and she's been very actively involved with both the West Hampton and the St. Mary's site and the East End.
Good evening, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you on behalf of the Sisters of Bon Secours. I'm Sister Anne Marie Mack, Senior Vice President of Sponsorship for Bon Secours Richmond. As it relates to this project, as with other projects, the Sisters of Bon Secours view this from a mission perspective. This proposal supports our mission of providing comprehensive and quality healthcare services to the residents of the communities we serve, and especially those who are underserved. It will create good jobs with competitive wages and benefits, as well as build strong relationships with local vendors and suppliers to the residents of our community. And lastly, this partnership allows us to work with local government and the community to capitalize on opportunities that will strengthen our economy and enhance the quality of life for our residents. We feel that this project and proposal not only meets each of these goals, but will build upon our current work with the city of Richmond. By way of background, Bon Secours sponsored our community plan to share it in 2009 at St. Mary's Hospital, and in 2010 in the East End of Richmond. These conversations, these charrettes, launched discussions with residents and city officials around future developments by Bon Secours at St. Mary's Hospital and Richmond Community Hospital. Our recent conversations with the city would move forward these developments and add a third component to Bon Secours investment and active participation in the Redskins' training camp facility. This combined package allows us to expand much-needed services in the East End, as well as the West End of the city, and at the same time, create jobs and tourism for the city of Richmond. Bon Secours is excited, honored, and proud to be part of this initiative, and to be able to continue to bring more good health to the communities we serve. So, on behalf of Bon Secours, I thank you for your consideration, and ask for your support for this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, my, it's our presentation. We're all having to answer questions now, or at the end of the poll here. Are there any questions at this time for the presenters?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's important to public here, my question of the earlier meeting, is there in any way, in any of this deal, that Bon Secours is exempt from paying taxes? It is affiliated with the Catholic Church, and I think that question has not been cleared up. I think we can clear it up for a minute.
Yeah, Mr. Councilman, thank you. I'm Jim down at Bon Secours, and we did discuss this earlier today. Bon Secours has both a not-for-profit and a for-profit entity, but in this particular instance, we would turn to a private developer to actually build the buildings that we're talking about, both at Richmond Community and at St. Mary's, which would in fact, put those properties on the tax rule. I think it's also important to note that in both instances, while we have a firm right now doing projected uses, and we will do an economic impact study, by the first of the year, we'll be able to present to city council and to the community proposed uses for those facilities. Once that's done, then the very public part of this kicks in, when the community and the city have the opportunity to look at those proposals, and we start to understand that until we go through that process, we will not get either the zoning or a building permit to build anything. So, we want people to know that this process, in fact, moving forward, is going to be very public, that we don't have a determined use that's been approved by anyone. We have to propose that to the city and to the community, and that will happen over the next couple of months, so that folks can in fact, look at what's being proposed, look at our potential rent brings, look at the job creation, and have the opportunity to ask any questions as they may. But the property, in fact, will be on the city's turf.
Thank you.
Thank you. And questions? Okay, at this time, we're going to hold a public hearing. Public hearing, rules of council, each side will have 30 minutes. That'd be 30 minutes for the opposition, and 30 minutes for those who are in favor. I'd like to see a show of hands of how many people have planned to speak in opposition. Okay, it looks like 10 or 12. So, what I will do is, each person will have three minutes to speak. That might take you a little over the 30 minutes, but let's give each person three minutes to speak. And if you would like, in the middle center aisle, that'll make it go a little more quickly. I'm going to count one more time, because we have 15, and we drop back to two minutes of questioning. Two speaking opposition. Okay, all right.
My name is Chris Dorsey. I'm speaking in opposition to this giveaway of land to the, two of the most wealthy entities on the planet. The city of Richmond is a city where many live in poverty, and our tax dollars are being given away to the Catholic Church and the Washington Redskins. And I can say I have much experience with these two entities. I am a former Redskins season ticket holder who wants my money back. And I know that going to the Redskins games is one of the biggest shakedowns anyone will ever experience, and they just shook down the taxpayers of the city of Richmond. And assisting them is their co-conspirator, the Catholic Church, who will not pay taxes. And I don't know who thought it was a good idea to lease out that prime real estate for $5,000 a year? I mean, you can't even rent a house in that neighborhood for $5,000 a year. It's ridiculous. It's a sham, as we all know. I mean, this is just like the jail deal. This is based on kickbacks, as people who read the Richmond Times Dispatch and the lawsuit against Alan Jackson will attest. We told you about that before. We have known about this for three years, that Bon Secours was going to get this property, and it was a giveaway, and the fix was in, and the city of Richmond was, you know, whipped Bon Secours every step of the way. And as usual, this is based on construction, kickbacks. The people don't have any say in what their government does. The neighbors don't want this. The neighbors knew about this. The idea that this is new to any of the neighbors is just patently false. We knew about this. This was the reason why we were having meetings with a council member, Tyler. And, you know, I don't think Mr. Valyles has said anything about this issue, but I'm wondering why it is that we can know who won the presidential race before the polls even closed, but we don't have any idea who won the race for first district city council in Richmond, Virginia, with 12,000 voters? I mean, this is all a sham. I mean, stop giving our money away, and seriously, I mean, when the people get in control, I mean, people like, I don't know, those who run Bon Secours and Dan Snyder, we're going to get our money back from you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President, President and council members, my name is Nadia Katsky. I represent the neighborhood directly across from the West Hampton School, where ordered by Libby Patterson, thank you, Granite, and Monument Avenue, which do actually include a portion of the county. We are, as a neighborhood, here not to speak to the Redskins, or to the opportunities that exist for the city, which sounds like there are many in regards to the Redskins, or to the Bon Secours, or Bon Secours wonderful programs that they... or Bon Secours wonderful programs that they will offer to residents within the city. As a neighborhood, as taxpayers, as residents, as parents, as community members, as members of the community who would like to and try to be engaged in public discourse, we are formally and respectfully asking that you take the West Hampton School out of the Redskins deal. We understand, um, excuse me, we have repeatedly, within the past three years, since Richmond Community High School has vacated the property, asked about the fate of the West Hampton School. And we have been concerned about the possibilities and, um, very engaged and interested in having a public bid and public proposal process that would allow for the community to have at least nominal input into what would go on that site. In addition, the playground is one of the busiest in the city. It is a crucial benefit to members of the community living in that neighborhood. Um, as the, we had a meeting last Thursday with the mayor and council member Tyler and Suzette Dinslow, Mark Oliver, and other members of the mayor's office. We're, we're, again, I do not want to go on too long, but want to respectfully submit that potentially another site in the city could be offered to Bon Secours, which would fulfill the obligations and allow for this benefit to accrue to the members of the city. But to please allow for a public process to evaluate the best possible adaptive reuse of the existing structure of the West Hampton School to the benefit of the community of the district. And once again, we ask this out as members of the public, as residents, as parents, and as concerned citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please, excuse me, I'm going to ask, rules of council, I'm going to ask you to respect those, please. Thank you.
Anyway, I like the cowboys. And I, you know, I'm listening to what the presentation had to say.
Ms. Harvey, you do that by yourself first.
Hi, my name is Elph Shirley.
And Martha.
I, I heard the presentation, and I'd like to understand more about what they said. I'm surprised that there was only one question. I have several questions sitting over there, and one of them was, they said there were 1,960 employees, I think, that worked at Bon Secours or from the city of Richmond. I like to make sure of that. But the other thing, whenever we bring something here to the city of Richmond, we should be making sure that the people of Richmond get the jobs. Not only that they get the jobs, but that they get the training for the jobs. If you're going to do this anyway, which is what you usually do, you need to make sure that that happens. We have more than have had for more than thirty-five years, a poverty rate of over 25%. If we're going to have businesses here in the city of Richmond, our people should be a part of it, especially if you're planning on giving away anything. Um, I'd like to make sure that you know that we should do right by the people in the city. I cannot understand how the Catholic Church and the Redskins got here. That does not make sense.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Yavon Jones, and I'm in opposition of this project because of the fact that the governor just made a statement. I think it was Saturday or Sunday, they put the freeze on, um, doing their money lending of, you know, freeze on buying anything or doing anything. So, I think the city ought to do the same thing for at least two months until we find out what the US Congress is going to do. You know, the city has always got a one to give all the money, but that's why I like Mr. Tyler, because he was always watching the way out first of giving away money. But, um, going back to the West Hampton thing, we got plenty of space over there by Bryant Park, over there by Burger Press. I mean, if you worry about the Redskins coming down nine and five, they were coming on a bus. All they got to do was get off on sixty-four, and you'd be right there at the end of Bryant Park. I mean, you could, you could put that instead of taking West Hampton, because they got a nice playground over there for the kids, and it's a nice area. And you already got a problem with Noll School. You need to put the kids somewhere else. You can put them in West Hampton. So, my thing is, while we can't even look at Bryant Park and back end where Burger Press is, you got a lot of space over there. You won't hurt none of the greenery. You won't hurt none of the walking trails up the front. You can put part of it back there, and you can get the state department there to put an exit right there off of sixty-four, off of nine and five to sixty-four, and you can go right in the back way, and it won't bother nobody. That'd be a real nice sign. And you still can go to the one on Amlee Street also from sixty-four. So, everything is right there. Somebody hasn't even looked at this project, they could, because you could actually do it at Bryant Park, at the end of Bryant Park, at the back end where Burger Press is. And like I said, if they wanted to go to the other site, you can still get on sixty-four, glint, I mean, at Staples Mall and go, and go down to Lee Street, and you'd be right at the other site. So, you could do it that way and still keep West Hampton. Because we need another, we need that school right there to help the kids of the school in Noll. And mostly, I mean, you know, you turn the school down, you don't have a good way to put the kids. So, you know, I'm kind of for this project, but we need to kind of like, kind of, okay, please, and just hold off for two months, please. Because, uh, we need to see what Congress is going to do. And like I said, the governor already said he put the freeze on money. So, nobody came up there saying anything about what the governor is going to do. Somebody could come across the street over here and talk to y'all about that. I'm serious. I mean, he says nothing right now until the birth of the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Evans-Hugh, senior from Southside. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Richmond has so many. Who or what is Richmond? Richmond is people. Richmond is people dividing into nine parts. Each part has a chosen person to represent it. This person does the will of the people in that part. The head is a long way from the toes, but on the same body. The West End is a long way from the East End. All the parts are like this, but all are part of Richmond. All nine parts should have a say when money is involved. Likewise, all the people of Richmond should have a say. Not just a few boogers, but all the citizens have a vote. All the citizens have a vote, yes or no, on this Redskins deal? Whatever side wins, that should be the answer. Professional football has murderers, rapists, wife and girlfriend beaters, drunkards, drug takers, child molesters, et cetera. And you want to put this project next to a children's science museum? Richmond is very fortunate to have people that can tell the future. The mayor, councilperson Samuel, et cetera. These people can tell you how many thousands of dollars the city will make, just like the Sixth Street Market, Main Street Station, school board, and City Hall, et cetera. Boy, a whole lot of money wasted. Maybe the mayor can foretell how much this half-assed street paving all over the city when frozen water seeps and all the cracks and the joints of the black tile will cost us the citizens. We deserve better. Another thing, this bicycle event, nobody else wanted it, so Richmond perhaps never getting it when we were the only ones there to ask for it. It is a crying shame, a shame, that the citizens, each citizen, each one of you council people should go to every citizen in your district and find out whether or not they want this thing up here. You don't even know some of the people in your district. I know one person that knows everybody in there, though. Y'all need to shake up. Don't be blowing our money like you've been doing all along. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you, Madam President, Councilman Tyler. My name is John Monahan, representing myself, here to speak in opposition to this blanket resolution, resolution in support of the proposed deal. I'm unable to comment on the economics of this deal, and I will also refrain from commenting on the prudits of using public opinion as leverage in this multimillion-dollar real estate deal. I would like to ask the city council to vote no on this blanket resolution in support of this multimillion-dollar real estate deal. I'd also like to respectfully remind the city council that parks and playgrounds enjoy special protection under the city of Richmond's zoning ordinance. It seems to me that with the West Hampton School property being zoned residential, that either a special use permit or an amendment to the zoning map would be the only two vehicles available to install office buildings or a medical complex in a residential area. We all recall that a special use permit was used, or Bon Secours obtained a special use permit to build the guesthouse along Libby Avenue. West Hampton School differs in one vital respect from the guesthouse site, and that it is home to parks and playgrounds. My specific request, or the specific reason that I ask you to vote no on this blanket resolution is because the blanket resolution implies or proposes that we uproot the totlock, which personally my daughter enjoys very much, and I can attest that many, many, many happy children enjoy. Let's not uproot the totlock. In fact, a special use permit is not available to the city council to interfere with or to adversely affect a playground. And that's in the zoning ordinance, which is the law of the land intended to preserve the character of neighborhoods and to assure homeowners the stability that they can enjoy when they invest in the city of Richmond. So, please vote no on this resolution, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Senator.
Good evening, Madam President, Vice President, Members of Council. My name is Rick Tatton. I'm living in Seventh District. Richmond City Council is being asked to make some huge and hasty decisions regarding a lot of city money and important city property, because Mayor Jones apparently made a huge and hasty decision to save the rest for Governor McDonald, that he could make the Redskins camp work in 2013, including funding $500,000 a year for the, for the team for the first three years. Unfortunately, the mayor did not move quickly enough in due diligence and completely neglected the public input part of the process, as shown tonight. I am here today to ask you to postpone all decisions until more information has been presented to the new council and to the citizens of Richmond. If this means we postpone for a year the coming of the Redskins, then they will have to do their training camp in the friendly confines of Redskins Park for one more year. Beyond the lack of due diligence and public input, there's a serious lack of transparency as to the complete details of this project. The mayor and his staff are only talking about the benefits of this deal, especially jobs and healthcare, which are certainly needed. What about the costs of this deal, which are not being discussed or being minimized? I attended last week's Redskins meeting at the Science Museum, and tonight's information is the same as being presented. The information packet does not speak to one piece of cost in this project. Ms. Dinslow referred to them tonight, that they were not a part of the powerpoints that were presented, including $500,000 a year for three years, including the interest and other costs of the wounds at the EVA, including a huge $7 million West Hampton School property, the cost of the RRHA properties that are going to be transferred to Bon Secours, and the expenses involved with closing 27th Street and East End, and tonight's fine $30,000 a year cost to rent the Science Museum property. In addition to these issues, the tremor and economic impact numbers are both incomplete and totally unrealistic. They completely, they are incomplete because they only promote the income numbers and not the expense numbers. What about the additional police expense on training camp days? What about the watering and maintenance expense of the fields? What about the intangible loss of a park currently used by many members of the community? In addition to these being incomplete, the numbers are also unrealistic for many reasons. The projection of 100,000 people coming to the camps is higher than currently coming to Redskins camps. The projection of 100,000 does not account for the Mid-Atlantic region residents who currently go to Loudoun County, who will not spend additional money, and will not be an overnighter here in Richmond. And the projection that 40% of the 100,000 attendees will be overnighters is just not possible, especially in this economy, just as they have done in Loudoun. The vast majority of people will come and go on the same day. Bottom line, there are too many unanswered questions for this council to vote on anything tonight, and I ask you to postpone all decisions until the new council is seated. If the city is going to spend this amount of money, of its own money, people making the decision should be the ones that would be in place of all of it. If you're going to vote on this this evening, I ask that you vote against supporting the mayor's plan as presented, and you vote against any alteration to the city's bond ordinance. Personally, if the city's going to lend itself $9 million, I prefer that money went and start to fix our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Madam Chairman, distinguished members of council, my name is Mary Jane Hoag, and I'm the executive director of Historic Richmond Foundation. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Historic Richmond to advocate for the protection of the architectural treasures of our city. I hope I'm hearing correctly that one of those historic structures is not at risk with the real estate deal for the Redskins training camp. West Hampton School was built in 1917, ninety-five years old, by a renowned architect, Charles Robinson. Mr. Robinson is known for many buildings in Richmond, including Fox Elementary, Genter Park Elementary, Thomas Jefferson High School, Mill and Rhodes, and even partnered with Marcello's Right for the New Altria Theater. Charles Robinson was also responsible for the original JMU campus, buildings on the campus of Washington and Lee, Wayne and Mary, University of Mary Washington, Virginia State University, just to mention a few. West Hampton School is both a neighborhood and an historic landmark. We strongly request that before any real estate deal is solidified, that the city only transfers West Hampton School with conditions that an adaptive reuse of the building be a part of the deal with appropriate infill additions behind and around it. West Hampton has been a landmark in Richmond's West End for decades. To demolish it will not only lose an architectural treasure, but a significant streetscape change in Richmond. It will also arode the real estate tax base of the surrounding neighborhood along with the architectural integrity of the block. We hope that homeowners and taxpayers can be part of the conversation. The Redskins are a wonderful addition to the Richmond landscape, but their new training camp should not jeopardize a landmark nor the characteristics of a neighborhood without full consideration of options other than bulldozing. Through the years, some have thought HRF is sensible to advocate for old buildings, such as Old City Hall, the National Theater, Linden Road, the 200 Rock of West Franklin Street, Churchill's Neighborhood. Yet, people marvel today that those buildings were ever even considered for demolition. As a director of a nonprofit, it is my responsibility to use donors' dollars responsibly. Taxpayer dollars should be used as diligently as nonprofit resources. Thank you for granting time to the community to solidify and establish the facts to best consider the uses for this treasure, green space, and neighborhood and historic landmark. We are really thrilled to hear that there really is consideration knocking down this building.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of Council. My name is Stuart Corrigan. I'm here tonight to represent the Westview Civic Association and our comments on the process to date for determining the future use of the West Hampton School. Our boundaries include the Our boundaries include Maple Avenue, from Grove to Patterson, the west side of Libby, and offshoots of both of those streets, and you can see we're very interested in what happens with this very large parcel in our neighborhood. As noted by others, we're concerned with the process to date, this land openness and transparency, and most importantly, input from our civic association. Other civic associations have noted they've also been cut out of the process. As was noted about St. Mary's, we built in the Charette in 2009, and I would note the headline of the Richmond Times Dispatch, "St. Mary's Will Include Neighbors in Planning Process." So far, that hasn't happened for the St. Mary's side or the city side. That's distressing to us. We'd like to ask, respectfully ask, that you include us in future discussions in a meaningful way, not with preordained outcome, where we would like to be able to get information, for example, I know you've done an economic impact study, where's the neighborhood impact study? Maple Avenue, if you travel, it made a great amount of traffic there, according to the VCU Urban Planning Program, was St. Mary's and St. Christopher School, with 75,000 square foot medical office building, employees, patients, and others there. We'd like to find out what the impact is on Maple Avenue, where a large number of our neighbors live, and hope that you take the time to put a study together for that, crime, safety, environmental factors. It's equally important to us, just as the economic impact study is equally important to the city. We'd like to have another study in school, so we'd like to ask that you have some information to leave to us, other neighbors, allow us to be in the process of discussing this in a meaningful way, and we'd like to ask that you postpone this until we have the opportunity to do so. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Members of the Council, Madam President. My name is Marion A. Hoag. I live in the van, and I speak on behalf of those who knew the B Street Park. In case you haven't visited lately, it looks like a golf course. It is not a derelict piece of property. It's a place where we and our dogs walk every day, and there are going to be more people like us as people get older. So I would suggest to you that it is in the interest of the City of Richmond to keep these areas where people can walk comfortably and recreate and be in the nature. Some person who went back the other day said, "This is our little piece of country in the city." And it truly is. We all love it, and it is the closest part to the lower end of the van where people can walk. So I would first of all say, please pay attention to that. My other comment is that after having practiced law and saving parks and recreation areas in Northern Virginia for 30 years, this is one of the slickest operations I have ever seen to move, to move public property to private economic development at no cost, literally, to those who are receiving with that. The Redskins are a wonderful team. I raised four boys, and I am a devoted Redskins fan, but they are an industry. National Football League team is an industrial use. Now, the truth is how we get the Redskins here as an industry? And you've got a tremendous capability in the Chamberlain Industrial Park, which is very close to our wonderful Virginia Union University, where they play football, and they don't have very much space to do that. They have simply two little fields. When you're planning, approach Virginia Union. They wanted to use their fields for the Redskins, and of course, Virginia Union probably said, "You guys be kidding? We don't have any space here for you guys." What? What if a huge industrial facility, sports facility was built right there outside Virginia Union University, could accommodate four and more wall fields? And what an inspiration it would be to those kids who are attending Virginia Union, and giving them the kind of inspiration that they need. So, this is a hail mary pass for you guys. Cool it! Take another look at this, and think of a partnership between the Redskins and Virginia University, not Bonsecours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Miss Vice President. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Fred Burman. I represent the Glen Burnie Neighborhood Association. Glen Burnie is a neighborhood that is between Patterson and Grove Avenue and Libby on the south east end of the city, so or southeast end of that corner. So if you look about, we're basically the third neighborhood association now that is deeply concerned about the use of the West Hampton site. Our neighborhood association today sent a statement to the governor, sorry, to the mayor, as well as certain city council members, about our lack of transparency of this process to date. If you think about today, we came here with the neighborhood, and we have not actually seen any of the details of the proposal so far. This was the first time the public has seen it and is able to comment on this. This is very concerning, especially considering this is such a large and very attractive site in the middle of the thriving west end for us as neighbors, and we are 127 neighbors or houses right near this site. This is very concerning. The biggest thing that strikes us is, tonight, a gentleman from Bonsecour nicely pointed out that this will go through a proper zoning and special approval process on SGP, et cetera. The question that we have here for this association is, isn't this lease contract kind of putting the cart before the horse? What I mean by that is, if you give a 60-year long-term lease to a company without knowing what they're going to do with the site, nor has the neighborhood had time to weigh in, approve, nor have any studies been done on economic impact, traffic impact, all of the other concerns raised, how can a 60-year lease be given? So the question is, if you consider for a council, short of just voting no on a combined proposal for the Redskins, is there a way to make this lease conditional? Is there a way to make the West Hampton lease conditional that Bonsecour has to find a use that is acceptable to the neighborhood, that is approved by the surrounding neighborhood associations, that is positive for the benefit of the community, and if those criteria are not met, that lease will become nullified within the term of, you can pick it, two or three years? So it provides Bonsecour two or three years, and provides an option on a lease that the economic developer does not give them a 60-year lock on a very, very attractive piece of real estate. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Council. My apologies, I have just a few concerns. The first one is transparency. The second one, these, I guess, are the bathroom deals that seem to have been made. Also, the fact that we are dealing with an industrial power, called the Redskins, which helped enjoy the Redskins, a $1.6 billion corporation. And I'm concerned about the impact study in which the City of Richmond is going to be on the hook for all citizens, maybe for 500,000 and others. Another funny person said, "Well, the financial exposure is going to be small." I mean, I guess the financial exposure to most people is small too. But then, there's also my concern about the land in the local football field, which is known as, I think, the Pullman yard. Once you start digging, will there be some hostility about environmental studies, and all of a sudden you find you've got a real serious problem in that area because it was a railroad, which has that been seriously looked into? Another concern was that Loudoun County said that they get between $500,000 and $600,000 from the tourist revenue in the training camp. Now, Loudoun County draws from, I'm guessing, generally, about a metropolitan base of 3 million people. The City of Richmond, yeah, I hope metropolitan area is probably 100 million, well, there it is. And I just sort of wonder, having our mayor claims that the economic studies will reap a windfall of, I think it's probably 6.5 million, because the Redskins are 2 million, six of 6.5 million a year, which is going to help Richmond. Personally, I think that this person who did this economic study, probably later, was also working in Paul Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Councilman, Councilwoman, should I wait for Councilwoman Tyler to return? Or should I go?
No, I think, but I am going to say something. I asked people who was going to speak. I asked for hands to be raised. I count them. I allotted everybody three minutes to fit within our 30-minute, because that's how many people you have. But four or five would be fine, join the line, being one. So I'm going to ask you to please make remarks very carefully.
Okay, I will keep it very very.
Wait on our 30-minute. I don't want everybody to have a chance, but I did ask in the beginning, who's speaking?
My name is Lisa Charant, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Alliance for Progressive Values. And I want to take a little bit of a bigger picture idea about the Redskins and Bonsecours project. While we're not opposed to the Redskins being here, nor are we opposed to hospitals, what I would like for you all to consider is that are expansions of hospitals really a symbol of a healthy community, or are they a symbol of a unhealthy community? In our opinion, more hospitals means that we have a less healthy community, and we would like for you to consider putting an investment into building healthier communities. Now, I think we all know that the diabetes industry is about $300 billion a year, cancer is about $128 billion a year. All these numbers are great for the gross domestic product. We are measuring to help our communities on how unhealthy we are. So in investing in this project, we would like you to consider making equivalent investment into building healthy communities. Both the Redskins and Bonsecours are well endowed corporations, 1.6 billion with the Redskins, I'm not sure what Bonsecours's net worth is, but I'm sure it's pretty high. So in considering what we are doing in building health and wealth in our communities, I ask you all to consider in a bigger picture, what do you consider to be health and wealth for all of us, not just for corporations? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joey Darin, a resident of the 4th District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll leave for you. I'm here to oppose this resolution. I have concerns about the proposed transaction with Redskins, but I'm specifically addressing the proposal to ease the West Hampton School to Bonsecours on three grounds. First, the financial terms of the proposal, I think, are terrible to the city. As you may know, the city assessment is $7.5 million worth of property. If you assume that land would sell for $5 million, which I think is quite reasonable in today's market, and you invest in that at 8%, that would generate $400,000 a year for the city. As it is, the initial term of the ground lease is for 60 years. If you used a similar 8% discount rate, that would generate over the 60 years, the present value of those 60 years worth of ground rent is $65,000. I repeat, $65,000. Secondly, and equally importantly, this sets a terrible precedent. This is one of the first times I can recall that we're having economic development considerations trumped community planning. Although this is probably on land, and this is the very issue that people voted on when they approved the amendment to the state constitution, because people were concerned about municipal bodies taking property and using it for economic development purposes, ignoring the wishes of residents. That's particularly true in this case, because I, along hundreds of other people, participated over the course of the year in 2011 in an extensive public planning process for an updated master plan for this area, which was conducted by this city's planning department. The citizens were very clear that they did not want the hospital to expand. What they wanted and needed in this area was housing, particularly housing that is smaller in nature for people who want to remain in that neighborhood and age in place. I think it's disappointing that Bonsecours, to the best of my knowledge, never indicated what their plans were and never reached out to the community. I think there would have been an opportunity to perhaps provide some housing that would allow people to age in place and use the medical facilities, or the excellent facilities Bonsecours has. Last is transparency. I find it very surprising, I as a member of Housing Authority, have participated in a total of four different community outreach efforts, Duff Court, Gilton Court, Whitcomb, and Crayton, in fact, I'll be doing that tomorrow. It's been an extensive, lengthy process of input for what the people in those communities want. So I would have to say I'm extremely disappointed with the city administration and Bonsecours taking this approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Edward Ross. I'm a resident of the West Hampton area, and I am a member of the West Hampton Citizens Association. I'd like to speak in opposition to this proposal as it has been presented. The construction of a 75,000 square foot building with no mention of the preservation of a historic building, it's assumed that this building is to be formally restored, as been mentioned earlier, will require a special use permit. Our locality is losing control of neighborhood participation in project. Where are the plans for this medical building? The city and Bonsecour seem to be in a partnership. We questioned, is there a conflict of interest? Financial transparency is missing, as are the details of the projected income to the city package. There are too many unknowns. City is agreeing on a concept, but unclear about specifics. Why did the city not accept this, a public bid process for this valuable piece of property? It's a very expensive economic development venture, $10 million that needs to be raised for a bond referendum for an eight-year Redskins commitment for only three weeks of use per year. The property for the practice fields and training facility is being leased from the state, so what happens after the eight years where Redskins lease? Who owns the property or the facility? After 10 years, the training facility building goes back to the city. In 15 years, the land goes back to the state. Bonsecours is spending $6.3 or $4 million toward the Redskins training facility, and the city is getting a return of $300,000 paid over a 60-year period. This $5,000 a year lease amounts to a monthly lease of approximately $416. Most city taxpayers spend more than three times this amount in city real estate estate taxes. What happens at the end of the 60-year lease? I'd like to also mention, no traffic studies have been done. We're concerned about parking, pedestrian traffic, street curbs, crosswalks, and environmental concerns. Also, where is the city going to get the $4 million a year that is needed, $4 million that is needed in sponsorship over this eight-year period? I would like to request that you oppose this project. It's been presented, and there's still more study that needs to be done. I think it's been very poorly presented to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I think all those who have spoken so far, could I say show of hands, if anyone's speaking in favor of this? All right. It said, those who are in favor of this project, if you could also line up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Monica Lade, and I'm the new Charles Angels, and I live very close to And I live very close to the park. I am neither for or against, but this is what I would like to say. I have the opportunity to attend the meeting at the Science Museum, with many who are present here. This is how the field impacts me and my community. I'm there almost every day on my bike with my daughter. Yes, there is another park not too far from me, but I don't have the liberty to use my bike and to take my daughter. And I also taught my daughter how to drive around this field, so if I don't, she'll be driving now. And then it's also green space for many of my neighbors. There's also, some of you may or may not know, cyclocross practice. Cyclocross is what many cyclists do after the bike season ends, the road season ends. And so we use the field and we practice. It's on Tuesday evenings at six. And we recently moved it near the tennis courts because of the light. It is well maintained and well patrolled. My family, my neighbors, we've all really enjoyed this beautiful green space. When I attended the meeting last week, Jay Far from EDA said the process was as such. The process was involved with the Redskins, the corporate sponsors, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the Science Museum. And I guess the part that was missing, it was very, very clear to me, where are the people? Where are my neighbors? Where's the community? And I did not hear that, anything. What I'm urging everyone to do is visit this beautiful park. It does not have gorgeous architecture. I appreciate gorgeous architecture, but there's nothing there that needs to be torn down or that needs to be preserved. I just want to see, I want more answers. And I would also like my taxpayers to finish some other projects. There's another stadium that needs lots of answers. That's not a part of this conversation, but I think there are other projects that are really, that I want to see finished that's close to my heart. I am not, well, I'm more respectful than a football fan, but I want to see projects that's going to benefit my neighborhood. I've been in the city since the eighties. I raise a family here. And I will support anything that's for the benefit of my community. So what I'm urging people to do is visit the park, and let's work on all this together. And, you know, I'm not in a place right now where I can say I am for or against, but I think we need to have more dialogue with more people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Harding, and I am the chair of the Richmond Business Council of the Greater Richmond Chamber. And I'm here tonight to support this resolution on behalf of the committee of management. We believe this is a winning economic package, and Richmond Business Council stands behind it. Beyond the obvious economic benefits of added jobs and tax revenue, it will facilitate the path for wellness projects that will lift revitalization efforts, which strengthen the entire city and anchor our region. We have engaged with our friends at Bonsecoors, Community Hospital, to understand their leadership efforts and vision around redevelopment in the East End Transformation Plan. What we have observed is nothing less than remarkable. Examples of the C program demonstrate that. And there's a component in this Redskins deal that expands health services to areas in dire need of transformation, such as the East End. This collaboration between the Redskins and the city and Bonsecoors is a partnership of shared values and community and success. Richmond is a community of real progress and camaraderie. This package gives us the ability to put people to work and support positive health initiatives while bringing everyone together to rally behind a national team. Please consider this as a strong pro-business economic development opportunity, as well as an equally strong community opportunity. It is good for our entire capital region, and we believe it will serve as a shining example of public-private partnerships that work for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President, Members of City Council, my name is Jack Berry, and I'm the Richmond Metropolitan Convention and Visitor Bureau. And we're here to support the proposed site. One thing about the time, it's July, August, which fits perfectly into family vacations. And when a visitor will come to the area and experience the campus next to the children's museum, next to the science museum, next to the boulevard, it'll be huge exposure for extending that family vacation. I'd like to give an example of people who attended Picasso as recent as yesterday's weekend with the sports backers. You have tens of thousands of visitors, at some expense or others, who came to the Richmond region to run the marathon to see Picasso, to see Chuhui. My point is that we've conducted studies on inter-studied visitors. Forty-four percent of visitors plan to return to Richmond because they had such a wonderful time, and ninety percent will eventually come. The secret of our success are repeat visitors. And this, if it's 10,000, 100,000, 200,000 visitors, bringing them will just be an investment on the infrastructure for tourism. The other thing I'd like to point out is we commissioned VCU for a study on the highest occupancy weekends in the calendar year of 2011, and we'll be continuing on doing this every single year. In 2011, the top ten weekends were involving, with highest occupancies in hotels, involved sports. The only exception in the top ten was COVID in a green, which has forced Labor Day into August and September. At the end of the story, tourism is supported by sports, and it's a huge investment on the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, my name is Robert Vla. The fact that Richmond is exactly where I was born and raised at. I had an opportunity to see Bonsecoors come up from the child and send all the houses in my neighborhood. I live right on 28th and Amal, directly across the street from the hospital. The hospital has been, Bonsecoors has been a great neighbor. Ultimately, they had things for us when we were young, as far as for the harvest fest. They also had health streams every year. Ultimately, I think that this entity is building something new over there that is beneficial to that community, especially my community, to being born and raised there all my life. I love the Redskins with all my heart. I've been a Redskins fan all my life. And I think it's imperative that people need to understand that I take that trip to Redskins Park every year, and it's tons of Richmond residents, not just me, it's hundreds and thousands of Richmond residents. That I see friends, neighbors, foes, everybody at the Redskins Park. And I mean, if you look at my Facebook friends, we got pictures of Redskins Park that are long with the governor being there this year and going to see RG3. So ultimately, I think it's very important that we do bring this here, and the economic impact that will bring here to Richmond is essential to everything that we need. You don't understand how much money our economic impact and will generate, and they don't understand that tourism will jump off the roof. I mean, ultimately, once they realize the things that we have in Richmond, it's a lot of things, and I got friends who are trying to find places to stay, knowing things that's coming from New Jersey, as far as DC, all the way from North Carolina to Florida. Ultimately, I mean, it's very important that we understand that this is a great economic impact for all, and it will really help the city of Richmond. I think it's great that we bring the Redskins here, and I think it will be great for all citizens of Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President and Council, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Ray Hoffman. I and my wife own a home across the street from St. Mary's Hospital, and we are very much in favor of this proposal, mainly because the West Hampton School, as I see it, having lived there for three years, has been an empty school building. It is very possible it would remain that way if nothing were to happen with it. I do understand that some people are calling for a bid process. I read in Richmond Biz Sense last, or yesterday morning, that one of those proposals was for that, a lot to be turned into a Walgreens park, excuse me, a Walgreens drugstore, which personally, I think, does not fit for the neighborhood. I haven't been able to watch one store in action with regard to other projects that they've done, one such being the guest house, which was mentioned earlier. I've never seen an organization that overthrew to accommodate the requests from the community as much as Bonsecoors has for that particular project. Major changes made to that project, moving a mat from the street, moving the building mat itself, changing the facade in front of the building. Every time, it seemed like in every community meeting that I attended, Bonsecoors was willing to accommodate the people making requests, and to me, that's unheard. And I've just been accustomed to seeing that, having lived in Southern California for almost 30 years, that's just remarkable to me. As far as opening up that lot to the West Hampton School, like something else, there's absolutely no guarantee that that building will remain. In fact, I think that it probably would be worse. As it is, we heard earlier this evening, that they're going to try as much as they possibly can to, at minimum, keep the facade, if not more of that building. I think that's extremely important to the neighborhood. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Madam President, Members of City Council, I'm John Lutbro, of the Sports Backers, and we're very supportive of this initiative for two main reasons. One, the sports tourism opportunity here is significant, and we certainly think the Redskins are a draw, and there's a whole publicity awareness component that comes with having a training camp for the Commonwealth team here. So that publicity and awareness will be focused on Richmond for three weeks. But more importantly, the other 49 weeks of the year, we're very committed to work with Bonsecoors, the Redskins, and the city to make this facility work for our community on an ongoing basis. Just like the sports backers at Bonsecoors, it's extremely committed to making our community more healthy, and physical activity is something that we're both focused on together. One thing that both Bonsecoors and city economic development people would know is I often raise hard questions at meetings about how things get done and really push and press for real change. I know that Bonsecoors is committed to making a real difference, and we see that in the East End on a regular basis. They've been partners with a number of different initiatives there that are making a real difference, and we see this as an opportunity to expand that and look forward to working with both Bonsecoors and the Redskins to make our community even more vibrant throughout the year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Madam President and Honorable Council, my name is Joe Rudesill. I'm a resident of the West Hampton neighborhood. For record, I'm from a small town, North Carolina. I came to Richmond seven years ago because of the National Revival University. And I stayed at Richmond because of the promise that Richmond has. I always hear about the up and coming neighborhoods. I don't know how many years I've heard that Church Hill is up and coming, or certain parts of the area is up and coming. But I think people stay, and people hold on to those promises and the bigger vision of Richmond as a whole. For record, I'm a Carolina Panthers fan. I love Panthers, but they're terrible. But you see the same devotion to the Redskins. Yes, it supports, but at the same time, it's also about building healthier communities through schools. And I think that's what we have to see. We have to start, we have to stop, we have to start seeing the forest through the trees in this scenario. We keep being held back by various barriers along the way. So it's a challenge of the city council to kind of see the bigger picture and the better for the entire community. Our impact not only has an impact on Richmond as a whole, but the greater Commonwealth of Virginia. So today, I guess, what is the rest of the city's image and reputation if we don't proceed? And what if the Redskins don't come? It's not just going to be an article in RTCD or ABC 12. It's going to be an article in Washington Post and even the ESPN. We're going to be the city that's known for the city that can't get a deal done. Our beloved Braves left, we were unable to land the NASCAR Hall of Fame under the last administration, and now we can't land the Redskins. How does that make us look like in the national spotlight? We have a city with so much promise and so much history. We could have been on Charlotte, or if you want, it is today. Two major professional franchises, the home of many national banking institution headquarters, but still, we're kind of dragging our feet on big decisions that have to be made. We have a 27-year-old minor league baseball stadium. Let's give the community something more than a 27-year-old minor league baseball stadium. Let's give them hope, a simple vision. Let's help our community build a culture community, because it's what the people and this community deserves. So let's think about a little positive impact for Redskins, and not only for Greater Richmond, like I said before, the Commonwealth of Virginia. We have a great opportunity at hand, and let's not let this one slip through our fingers as well. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Katie Holder. I'm resident in Maricopa County, and I live close to the West Hampton School in St. Mary's. I'm absolutely thrilled about the opportunity for the Redskins to come to our city. I heard tonight about the very significant and positive economic impact it'll have on the city. I think the fact that we have leadership from the Richmond Convention and Visitors Bureau, Sports Backers, and the Richmond Chamber speaks volumes to that. That opportunity would not be available to the city without the support of Bonsecoors and their successful collaboration working with the city of Richmond. And due to that very successful collaboration, they also have the ability to refurbish and revitalize the beautiful but empty West Hampton School. I think that Bonsecoors has a phenomenal job in communicating with the residents of that area, including myself, and I ask that you support this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's bring this back to Council for discussion.
Madam President.
Mr. Mr. Powell.
Gee, imagine this. You know, before I get started earlier tonight, I was impressed with an elder woman who said, this is a Hail Mary pass. I actually think this was a Hail St. Mary's pass. So anyway, sorry to cut you off. I want to speak for my heart, although I've been sitting here taking notes. I've been listening to people come down here. I've heard a lot of elder speakers. And I want to talk about transparency, and I want to talk about city groups and Bonsecoors and all the things I think we all know about this city. I had a few opinions down here tonight for this issue, whether you're for or against. Thank you. I think that speaks volumes. I think we see that. We oftentimes see that. You know, this is the first time we've had a public hearing on this. And you think about this, which Eric was absolutely right, how many hours and weeks and years we've spent on Dove Court, how many hours we've spent on Crayton Court, how many hours we've spent on other parts of our city? And yet, this comes along, we don't even hold a public meeting until we get here. You know, I appreciate everyone who's come down here, and I appreciate all the emails I've received. You know, I've got probably more emails than I appear to remember the last five to six days about this. You know, it's good the city of Richmond is looking for economic development. This is key to our future, there's no doubt about that. Positivity soon gets development, gets some very needed medical needs answered in the world of Washington. The Redskins come to the city. You know, and I'm not opposed to this, and I don't think there's a single person out here. I've got two emails that warned the district that absolutely said, maybe one came from the district that said, I'm opposed to the Redskins coming here. But what I got from folks was, I don't like the way this deal happened. I don't like the way this thing came down. The first district council didn't know about it. And that's the negative, you know, that's the negative aspect of this. The negative aspect is the fact that the West Hampton neighborhood is in pain. The families of the West Hampton neighborhood have lost faith in the city government. They've also lost faith in St. Mary's by excluding them from an open and honest discussion about possible in their community. I look at the Sisters, and I think of all the good things the Sisters represent, and it pains me to think I now have folks that reside in my district and now look at St. Mary's and look at the Sisters and say, you didn't treat me fairly. You didn't include me in the process. Instead of healing, we are hurting. Instead of helping, we are hurting. This neighborhood is a middle-class neighborhood, houses, there are 67 homes on that side of the street. Their average, if you take off Their average, if you take all sixty-seven and one together, their total, their average sales price is $211,000. It's not the million-dollar homes everybody thinks about in the first district. These are folks, this is their major asset. They decided to plan a stay in the city of Richmond because they had faith in us, and they had faith in the hospital, and they had faith in the city of Richmond, the city that everyone involved in the process was going to be fair and open and honest. That's what they did. They get up every morning, they go to work, this is their biggest asset. It's not like they got home at the river and wanted the ski lodge. This is their life. And while we're all talking about economic development for the city, we're turning our back on them. We're turning our back on them. And since when do we start showing our side to one side of the city and turning our back on the other? That's not what this city is about. That's not what I'm about, and I don't think that's what we're about. I think if we could take two weeks and have citizens in the West Hampton community get together, it would be completely different. I think we wouldn't even have this conversation, right? I think the icing on the cake came a couple weeks ago, and the gentleman's wife, who came down here that came from California, we were doing a special use permit for Bonse Corps and St. Mary's hospitality house for folks who are in need. And this neighborhood said, "We are willing to work with you on that." And they went out, and the design was done, some of it from the community, but not a lot. And then they came back, and they presented, and we got into a very good and honest and open negotiation. And the very last meeting, where the Civic Association approved that special use permit and said, "Councilman Tyler, we'd least like to go vote for it." That very meeting, a citizen of that Civic Association stood up and said, "The Wednesday before the Monday meetings that the Redskins were announced about the deal that came in place, they asked the administrator, 'Is Bonse Corps have anything that they're doing with West Hampton School? Are they negotiating on this deal right on West Hampton School right now?'" And the administrator looked him in the eye, didn't turn, didn't flinch, didn't back away, looked at him and said, "No, we're not doing anything. We're not even thinking about it," is what she basically said. And then, come to City Hall on Monday at 12:30, sit down with Ms. Suzette Denzil and Mr. Marshall to have a meeting, and then learn about it, and then learn about it, that there was a deal going on, and that this administrator had basically misrepresented all the good that the hospital has, and all the good that the hospital does. They wronged this community, they hurt this community, and it's not the Sisters that do this, and I know this in my heart and purse for the House's sake. I wish you would take the time to think about the sixty-seven families that are struggling in this neighborhood, that need your help, that need your prayers, that need your thoughts. And think about it, and hold this resolution off for two weeks. We're splitting apart tonight. Go forward with the resolution saying we're all for the Redskins, because we are, but let's have an open dialogue that we need to have. I don't know any other way of doing it. It's called open and honest government. It's the only way I know how to do anything, is to put all the cards on the table and to be truthful with people. And that's what I've tried to do here tonight. I would hope that Sisters and Bonse Corps would think about this, allow for our community to come together and have a good dialogue. I will do anything to facilitate it, I will meet at any time, you know, the Saturday, the Sunday, you know, pick a time where we can bring the community in and have a dialogue. There were a lot of misconceptions tonight, or misstatements made about the economics of it, you know, and folks, I wish you could even, and I can understand why you said it, because you don't know about it. You don't know about it, you have no time to worry about it. I'm going to close by saying, I hope my council members will see where I'm coming from and understand that my heart is ached, and that it's time for us to do the right thing, pass the resolution that says we're for the Redskins, and then ask for time for the city administration and for the Bonse Corps to get in the room, be with the community, and I'll facilitate it. I will do everything in my power to try to restore the faith that this community should have in the city government, and that they should have in the Bonse Corps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Towns. Ms. Joel.
Thank you, Madam President. I too, I heard, I heard over and over, issues, concern about the absence of transparency in this deal. I'm troubled, Mr. Towns as well, that I wasn't briefed on this until the day. He wasn't briefed, you know, there were a couple of others who weren't briefed on this until the day. Huge deal. I've been a Redskin fan for forty years. Every year I fire him, every year I take him back. Hopeless, hopeless. So it's an exciting thing, and that brand will be major lead for Richmond City. Yeah, yeah. And I do understand that development deals require some degree of secrecy. Now, I get that. But then, this was not a situation where the value of the land was going to go up. It's all public domain. You go in secrecy when you're afraid of signaling that the deal is coming down the pipe and people start driving up the cost of property that you might want to acquire. That's not the case here. So what's with all the secrecy? I want to talk about this real quickly in two facets. One, this is a resolution. A resolution that's not binding. It simply gives a sense to the council to go forward with working on a real deal. The nice lady who came down here with Historic Richmond Foundation is absolutely correct. I know these principles. There's enormous value in not just the property, but that value. And so if that would be used to be acquired or achieved to this deal, then we ought to make every evidence there, and it ought to be locked in. The second facet of what I want to talk about, which is the deal itself. I haven't seen the deal. I've heard the proposal, much of which is speculation. I've got real concerns about eight-hundred-and-fifty, I mean, $8.5 million of economic impact. I've got staff pulling together, studied today, that captured about twelve, thirteen NFL teams, none of them close to $8.5 million in economic impact. What world are we talking about? I don't think more than three of them had anything close to a hundred thousand visitors. And even that, they're not talking anywhere near eight and a half billion dollars of economic impact, so if that is the, if that is the measuring stick as to whether this is a good deal or not for Richmond taxpayers, then we ought to at least have a look into the calculus that arrives at this number. Ah, we can go to the bank on it, I guarantee you that. The other has to do with what is the benefit to the city. Prestige, yes, that the Redskins are coming. But only for three weeks out of the year. What in the world are we going to have for that facility in the rest of the year? We've not been told what's to happen there to any great extent. And what do we were told, we were only told today, and y'all weren't here to hear it. The people who live there certainly ought to have been apprised of what the real plans are. And so, again, it's another instance where it's running, running all over the mountain. I don't like, not that I don't like the deal, I don't like the way it was done, I don't like the way we are treated, I don't like the way the public's treated, over and over. Something shoved up under you to vote on, hurry up or you'll lose the deal of your life. Sign here, sign here. If you don't sign, you'll lose the deal of your life. This is just not the way to do business. So, part one is tonight, the will of council to go forward to see if we can do a deal. Part two has to be dedicated to making sure it's the best deal for all concerned. And these folks are made some serious concern about how we are performing on this thing, and who's going to benefit. Redskins is the third most profitable NFL franchise in the country, and I don't see them putting up one red nickel. They're asking somebody else to do it. So, again, I'm going to vote for this resolution to go forward, but I think the real work is in the actual audience that has to come ask this council, and the opportunities between then and now, that people have an opportunity to input. We need your input on this one. It's obvious, because there's too much left out. And I suspect, like so many other special use permit fights, the only fights that we've had, real value has come out of the give and take in those open meetings where the citizens have an opportunity to weigh in, and we should do no less than every opportunity needs to be made on my part, yours, for everybody else here, to see to it that citizens get a shot at giving it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Towns. Ms. Samuels.
Thank you, Madam President. There's no easy issue on City Council, there's easy answers for or against this, but getting to those positions is an incredibly time-consuming and detail-focused way to spend your time. Two issues here that I've heard time and time again, really weren't about the deal itself, but the transparency and the time for citizen involvement and citizen input. And I'm not saying there weren't concern reasons, but time and time again, those are the concerns that I've heard. It does seem more and more like West Hampton is distilling. Should the land have been sold and given that money that has been given to the schools? Or should the land be used to leverage a greater long-term value or good for not just the city and its residences, but the city's businesses? Would that do more for the benefit of the city than a one-time payment or a one-time influx of cash? Is it better to have a wonderful functioning economy or stimulus? I'm concerned about the preservation of the West Hampton School building. I think that at this point, we all realize that the Bonse Corps are in our path, it was quite a bummer for themselves, and I think it's more than fair to say that as they come to us with whatever it is that they're going to be proposing, that we make it clear early on that this is a building that shall be preserved. Not that ought to be, not that be nice, that it shall be preserved and adapted with your needs. So Lee Street site is different. First of all, just to be clear, this is not City Park. It's in by the state. And my discussions with folks would appear the developers have been drooling over this site for quite some period of time. The state can sell it at any point, and just the state would reap the benefits, and probably go to the science museum, and the state would reap the benefits of it without any benefit to the city, so whatever real estate had to get off the ground, the available people. But it wouldn't have any impact in the East End, it wouldn't have any impact on the West End, and it wouldn't rank the World Red Knell franchise like the Redskins. So we need to pay attention to that. This proposal, the idea behind it, not the detailed proposal that we're going to be seeing over the next few weeks and months, but the proposal tonight, the resolution, is simply one that does preserve green space, that does a huge economic benefit for the city at large, and for three specific sites within the city specifically. This is also a resolution, not a ordinance, does not carry the weight of law. This is essentially a city council's thumbs up or thumbs down to an idea, not something that has to be followed indictable. It doesn't require the city to sign a contract, it doesn't require the city to do anything. It is just endorsement of an idea. Is this something that the city council believes makes good sense in general? Tonight, we will see, or we're going to see shortly, a ton of papers that are going to be the details of this project. I think it's around six or seven of them papers, and over the next few weeks and months, we'll be digging into the details and making sure that what sounds like a good idea in principle is, or is not. But that's the way we're going to have to do this, not by saying, "Yes, we'll do it tonight, and then hope everything works out." We've got long hard hours in front of us as a city, the residents, the businesses, the council members, and the administration still, to see whether or not this truly is a good deal that looks like it could be. Tonight's just, do we like the basic plan? Now, we can investigate the details. For those reasons, I am in support of this paper, but I will be paying very close attention to the actual financial details of the plan to ensure that it is a plan that makes good sense for the folks that are with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Dr. Muneal.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to simply say thank you to Bonse Corps for its extraordinary partnership in the East End of Richmond, working consistently to improve the health of the community, in a community where, as I shared earlier, we're only two, maybe a dying, two elderly too often from very preventable and irre treatable health conditions. And not just working to simply increase the offerings in terms of health services, but also to promote wellness in this proposal. And wellness in terms of physical health, mental health and general well-being, but also economic health, the types of grant opportunities that allow us to pepper the commercial quarter with small businesses that increase employment opportunities and access to amenities that the community sorely desires. This particular economic development package is pretty unique. There are multiple components to it, much of which you've heard discussed thus far. But for me, it is especially important because it addresses three major issues that are confronting our community. The need for increased revenue, the impact on health status, not just in the East End, but throughout the city of Richmond, as this project will have, and the opportunity to create employment opportunities in a community where poverty and unemployment is such a major concern. And so, I did have an opportunity to have a briefing before today, and in addition to today, and asked about various financial scenarios that would allow us to take a look at and to understand implications for such an initiative with three components as this has. And I think that we have received good information, but I still think there's more work to be done. And I think that in the coming weeks, months, we'll have that opportunity to vet the proposals, the financials, to better understand the role of EPA in this, and what that means for the overall community. Again, this is an expression of support for this concept, this idea, this package. This is a resolution, it's not an ordinance, again, as my colleague This is a resolution, it's not an ordinance, again, as my colleagues have emphasized, it's not the letter of law. It simply conveys council's desire and interest in this particular project as we see it, but clearly adding opportunity for further vetting the details that will come to us. I think that there are some real concerns that have been raised, and I will be equally as attentive to the engagement and involvement of the community and input from those who live in and near this proposed development. Presentation of the building is equally a concern, as well, again, as the financials in really doing due diligence to make sure that this is the kind of project that it appears to be for our city. And so, I, again, applaud and thank Bonds of Course for stepping up and finding help is not just the absence of buildings, but after promotion of wellness for physical and for economic in this kind of way of partnering with us and in our city and looking to have multiple impacts as this project will. I will be supporting this resolution and look forward to vetting the with great specificity to various components as they come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Ms. Jovanov?
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me, this is a difficult decision, but it essentially has come down to me that this body made commitments to Richmond Public Schools that purchase surplus properties that Richmond Public Schools had surplus back in the city with the proceeds from those sales. We'd go back to Richmond Public Schools and the maintenance, expansion and enhancement of their facilities. And what this proposes is that we lease this land, well, for $5,000 a year, $600 a month. And it's certainly a legal transaction, but not one that I believe is in spirit of what we committed to earlier. We can certainly give assurances to the extent that we can, or we can try, to let people know that we want to give them money in the future to Richmond Public Schools in order to maintain their facilities. Not all of the problems of Richmond Public Schools can be improved by money, but certainly, I think we can all agree that facilities can be and have to be improved by money, and they are inadequate. And when you saw these young people here earlier this evening with the YMCA, I can't look them in the eye and say I did what was right for them by supporting as it's currently presented. Seems to me that $5,000 a year is an inordinate price for the city to pay for what we're asking to do. I believe that there could be a lot of benefits here, but it seems to me that a burden of hand is worth four or five in push, and we can certainly promise and endeavor to do what we can for Richmond Public Schools going forward. The fact is that we cannot legally require future councils to appropriate this money. But this property has been out there, it's been discussed, I don't think it's any surprise to anyone that Bonds of Course would like to have it. And if expressed an interest in it, if you visit the hospital, their master plan seemed to indicate this building was within it. And I understand that, but this is in no way a market rate for this property, and I just cannot go along with it in its current structure. I'd love to be on board with it, but I cannot look parents and students of Richmond Public Schools, look at them and honestly say that I think this is in their best interests, because it's our own structure. I hope we can get a deal together, but in a certain form, I cannot support this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Jovanov. Ms. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with what my colleagues have said. This job of making tough decisions for the city is an extremely difficult one most of the time. But I will say that people are feeling very good about the city of Richmond in a lot of ways, and they're feeling good about the progressive movement that the city is making and doing things and making decisions about the redevelopment of the city in a broader perspective, while at the same time attempting to address some of the rural critiques that we have. There are several elements of this proposed development that I am particularly pleased with. I am particularly pleased with the fact that there will be families, the city of Richmond and the East End, which includes the community of East End, that will have expanded healthcare services that are tremendously needed. I am very pleased with the fact that the administration found the word with all. When we first heard about Redskins considering Richmond, there were all kinds of questions for how we could possibly be able to make this deal work. And I would like to say that if it was not from the partners, I don't know that we would have been able to successfully make this deal a reality. And so, I'm especially pleased that we have corporate sponsors, corporate sponsors here in the city of Richmond that's considering Richmond a meaningful and valued place to invest and to continue to grow and help us to build strong workforce and provide quality healthcare. But we also have the state that has stepped up to the table and willing to work with us in a very cooperative partnership way to make a development opportunity that has tremendous ripple effects possible on land that they own. I will say the things that bothers me about this deal is the fact that, and that has bothered me about several deals that we have had to deal with, the decisions that we've had to make in the city, is the time limit with this, in which we have to really evaluate the information that is before us and make a decision. And I am hopeful, as we've been hopeful before, that those timelines will significantly change. It's not fair to us, and it's not fair to the community when they feel as if a decision is being made without a full vetting of the information and full appreciation, for example, what will happen. I am grateful that this is a resolution, and as I look at the papers that have been introduced tonight as it relates to this, the finance committee's got its work cut out for it, because a lot of those papers will be coming to the finance committee and also to the maintenance committee, where all the concerns that have been expressed here tonight will have to be resolved, and they will have to be resolved with your input. They will have to be resolved with the number of meetings and the number of public meetings that is necessary, the journalists are heard, and the joint input recommendation is taken into consideration as it relates to the final decision that is being made as regards to it. So, and it may mean that this council is going to have to have smokes for meetings, not only the representatives of the prospective districts, by which that impact the club, this council as a whole. And I'm hoping to first to say, I made that commitment to you as the City Council, that you have an opportunity to be a part of this deal. Unfortunately, we are working within a time constraint that the Redskins need to be here and on the ground, and there has been a lot of hard, aggressive work that's been done to try to put this package together and put this deal together. And I want to commend the mayor and his administration for the hard work that they've done to be able to bring these significant partners to the table, wherein the outlay on behalf of the city and the city's tax commission dollars is a period, and that there isn't a giveaway here. There is a loan, but there's a repayment that's being imposed, and then repaid in a very short period of time. So, there's a lot more that will be discussed as it relates to this deal, and I just want to encourage citizens to be engaged in this process and don't lose hope that the voice is not important and it will not be heard and be involved and really be shaping the final decisions as it relates to how we go about carrying out all three phases of the proposed development that is before us.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I have a couple of things that I'd like to say. One of the things that I would like to say at the outset is that if we have gone through this process, we better understand the needs of the Redskins. We've learned that the Redskins are committed to certain values that are common to those of the city. Redskins are committed to health, the Redskins are committed to youth, and as we strategize with them, it just became a natural fit with Bonds of Course, who is also committed to health and also committed to youth. And so, that marriage, although somebody said tonight, I don't know how the Skins and Bonds of Course are going to get it, if you think about it, it is a natural fit. This tonight, we are looking, as everybody has said, at a resolution. This is not an ordinance. This is council saying, we like this package. In terms of West Hampton School, no, Bonds of Course, this deal has poured, and we've long been papers. Bonds of Course, yes, they will have the ability to have an office facility at that location. However, the communities will determine what that location looks like. We will go through a special use permit. The community will be involved every step of the way. How high is it going to be? What is the setback going to be? How many windows are you going to have in the front? That is what a special use permit does. So, as this process moves forward, there will be total community involvement in what happens to that piece of property. I've heard also that that piece of property has been assessed at over $7 million. Well, that's true, but that's because that's an entire piece of property, not just the piece of property of where the school sits, but also the piece of property that has the fields. The Bonds of Course has said, we will maintain those fields, probably, I hate to say it, better than the city, and they're going to spend $35,000 a year to maintain those fields. They are going to move the top line, and I'm sure that that move will be worked with the community. We had an offer here to the city of Richmond, here in council, used to look at the entire city, I look at the city as a whole, and what's best for the city. We had an offer that is going to give us 115 square feet of development, $42 million in total investment, over 300 jobs, if you count the jobs with the Redskins, $19 million in mental payroll investment, and community outreach, and three mental facilities, two of which are in areas where we need mental facilities and we don't have. What we are saying tonight is we like this package. The devil, as they say, is in the details. We're going to get those details, but tonight, we're going to say, we like this, let's go for it, and I think we'll go for it. So, Mr. Roberts, would you call the question?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Since I have the pleasure of going first and listening to all, I appreciate a couple of comments.
Sure.
I've learned a long time to go to a certain place with paid intentions, and it always starts out that way, and tonight's the first vote in the series of why this is a resolution. It's done by, at the same time, it's a step down that road, and once we start down that road, we can turn back, and I know that, and citizens know that. So, I want to be clear about this. This is more than just a resolution, it is about a direction and a step, and we'll be the first of many steps. And we may appreciate the renascence or many other things, but at the same time, it's not fair to the citizens who are first district, who have not had any input into this process. It's a win-lose situation. My recommendation in my proposal, I would make it a amendment to this resolution that we split this amendment and remove West Hampton School from, and that's my proposal.
Okay. So, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second motion?
Second.
All right. Is there discussion or should we just take the floor? Ms. Chairman?
I don't hear anyone.
Ms. Chairman, one thing that Mr. Tyler and I here, Mr. Thomas, we wish, we have to force a package, a package of three facilities. If we take one of those facilities out of the package, then we don't have a deal. What we are saying tonight is that if we pass this, that we prove of the overall plan that, yes, there will be so much, there will be community development, there will be community input, community input, community input, because all we are saying on this is that we approve of the overall package, but the community is going to be able to weigh in on what happens to that piece of property in terms of what the building will look like, sometimes even the hours of operation, the parking, the community has the ability to work through that special use permit. We have a lot of special use permits that come to the district, depending on how it works. And that is a piece, that is a piece of the puzzle that will, or of the proposal, that will be dealt with as we move along.
So, that means if we don't take it out of the package, it has to be cut all the way, but we're going to give the citizens over there a chance to come to us because we're set up.
Absolutely, Mrs. Jovanov, we have to get a special use permit. Absolutely.
Everything, I mean, anything, because I've heard Alan and I've heard you, and we're making that promise to those citizens in the first district, because I know that tonight some said that they didn't know anything about this. If we're making that promise, if they just want to go, I guess, back to Land Use or Badians or whatever, because I know that some that's in the papers right here, they are, they want to ask us or whatever, they can come to us because we're not going to break our promises to them.
What this resolution says, we just, we approve the overall plan, and that's the three sites, the West Hampton School site, Lee Street site, and the East End site. That's what we're saying, that is the plan. What happens on each of those properties, this particular property of West Hampton has to go through a special use permit, because that piece is not approved in zone. So, everything that happens on that property is going to have to be regulated by the special use permit, and those citizens will have to, every opportunity, this you will, this you will. All right. We're not going to have any back and forth. All right, three motion, your motion in a second.
Madam President, maybe I have seven, but I'll just say, what this basically means to me is that we have three components. One, the West Hampton School, we approve this resolution as it was amended, but as stated initially. We are saying to the community, we're going to allow Bonds of Course to put, in a non binding way, we're allowing them to build 75,000 square foot building on a site which currently is not zoned for that. The second piece is we're going to put a development down behind the Science Museum, which is for Richmond's which is for the Richmond complex. And then the third piece, which I think the only thing the city really has component in, is over by the Community Hospital, which is the community, is closing up a street for the rest of the property, it's private land that Bonds of Course owns, or it will negotiate for. So those, and so what we're saying there is we're going to allow for twenty-five thousand square foot building. I mean, we're basically setting the framework up for the future, and so all we're going to be, what we're telling our citizens is, this is the deal as if, yeah, we'll negotiate a few things with you, but this is the deal, take it or leave it, this is what we're dealing, and this is the first time they heard that. So I would respectfully request my colleagues to vote for the amendment and not the original paper.
Thanks, Madam President. Are there discussion? All right, I'll vote.
Council is voting on Council and Tyler's amendment to item number fifteen, resolution of twenty-twelve dash R one forty-one. Mr. Samuels?
No.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
No.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Rosioli?
Aye.
The motion has not passed.
So we have the, call the president, Mr. Parker.
Council is voting on item number fifteen, resolution of twenty-twelve dash R one forty-one. Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
No.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
No.
President Rosioli?
Aye.
The papers have been adopted.